Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Dr. Kane?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. Morell?
Here.
Ms. Novy?
Present.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
And Tensin Namir?
Here.
And Grace Partnett?
Not here.
Ms. Partnett.
Okay. One person.
Thank you. Everyone, please rise for the pleasure of the House. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all. High school representatives report. Tensin? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just wanted to get to you, Tensin.
The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law is enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, Montpelon Township Board of Education approved this meeting date. The number of the meetings may be posted at the Montpelon Municipal Building, all Montpelon Public Schools, the Montpelon Public Library, the Montpelon Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the Montpelon Public School Website, and advertising.
Tensin, high school representatives report.
So, in athletics, our very own Jen Juszczyk was recognized last week by the NJSIA during the National Girls and Women in Sports Day. Jen was the captain of the field hockey team this past fall and will be playing across this spring. The boys' basketball team won on Saturday against Dover with a score of 65 to 50. The boys are playing home tonight against Parsippany Hills High School. The girls' basketball team plays at Parsippany Hills High School tonight and hopes to improve their record to 14 and 9. Both the boys' and girls' basketball team qualified for the state tournament. On February 29th, the boys will travel to play Wayne Valley in their first round and the girls' team will play home against Indian Hills. The bowling team finished their season as the number three team in the state last week. The hockey team defeated Westmore Central with a score of 50, uh, with a score of 5 to 1 last week to win the, um, Haberson Cup. In clubs, Key Club is preparing for their annual volleyball marathon on March 11th. This year's theme is TV shows and movies. Nearly 100 teams will be participating in raising money for Key Club, uh, and they're still looking for volunteers. The drama club will be presenting this year's musical Pippin, March 3rd, 4th, and 5th at 7:30. Tickets are $15. And this Thursday and Friday, Montpelon's future Business Leaders of America members will be competing in the state competition. Also, next Monday and Tuesday, Montpelon's second chapter will be competing at their state, uh, competition held in Cherry Hill, New Jersey. And SAC is preparing for their annual student versus faculty basketball game.
Thank you very much. Uh, happened to be a good sports week this past week. Uh, Tuesday night, I saw you and Mr. O'Brien. We watched the girls' basketball game. Wednesday was wrestling.
Wrestling was incredible.
Incredible. And then Thursday night, boys' basketball, too. It was quite exciting. Any, uh, comments for members? Thank you, Tensin. Superintendent's report.
Okay. A couple things. I'll start off. At the last meeting, we had some discussion about the Battle of the Books. Um, we had determined not to continue that activity, and that was really based on, um, input that we had had from the principals, um, meeting with the administration, that decision having been made back in November. And unfortunately, I apologize, that apparently, um, you know, obviously, I had not made the board aware of it, but, um, you know, that it had not effectively been communicated with the parents at the, uh, elementary school level. Um, I guess part of that, um, you know, my newness to the district and not understanding, um, you know, the, the impact that it would have in, in some of the elementary schools. The decision that we made was, uh, based on, um, the current curriculum that we have in place in English Language Arts. Our current standards ask students to read, uh, stories and literature and more complex informational texts as well. Um, and for them to develop background knowledge that would allow them to, uh, synthesize that material, to deal with it in, um, a more critical thinking, problem-solving analytical way than, um, the way that Battle of the Books deals with the books that the students are, are reading for, for that program. Um, that some of the current reading standards that we're operating with, um, ask the students to analyze how and why individuals, events, or ideas develop and interact over the course of a text, to interpret words and phrases as they're used in the text, um, and to talk about figurative meanings, analyze how specific word choices are made, uh, by authors to convey, uh, meaning or tone, uh, and to analyze the structure of texts and, um, and to be able to communicate how they relate, uh, to each other and to the work as a whole. The problem that we have with the Battle of the Books is that it really does not support the development of those skills because the structure of the Battle of the Books is for students to identify facts within those books and to memorize them so that they can respond to questions that are posed by other teams. Um, the answers to those questions can only be the title of the book and the author. So, we cannot ask questions about character development, about plot development, about the intent of the author, about, uh, specific vocabulary. And that's really what the curricular focus in terms of, uh, English Language Arts has become under the current standards that we have. Um, the Battle of the Books was discussed by the Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee, uh, committee at our last meeting. The final resolution that we have is that, um, we are not looking to, uh, continue Battle of the Books, but what we have left open is the opportunity for the reading specialists, the media specialists, and the principals to develop an activity focused on reading, um, that they would propose, that would, uh, be able to engage students in, um, some type of activity. But I feel, and I believe, uh, the committee concurred, that the current structure of the Battle of the Books was, you know, had kind of outlived its usefulness in terms of what we're looking to accomplish with reading instruction for our students at that fifth grade level. So, um, uh, I, I don't know if there's any questions on the part of the board. Um, we do have a couple presentations, um, if we wanted to, if there was any questions or comments before I move on to those.
Okay. And I concur with all of your comments. The question I have is, seeing we're now in February, we still have four months, is there any possibility that an in-kind sort of competition could be devised between now and then to allow the students to have an opportunity to compete at something like this and, you know, not have lost the opportunity to do this in fifth grade? And, you know, keep in mind, it's, nothing has to be approved by Department of Education or anything. It's something that the media specialists, I would think, can, you know, put together in fairly short order and give the students an opportunity.
Um, I don't, I don't know that there, we've kind of left it in their hands, so I don't know if, if something could be created that would allow us to, um, communicate to the students to create that interschool competition element. Um, I guess we're sort of open to that, but, you know, given the timeframe, because quite frankly, once we hit March in the school year, things start to roll very quickly. We have the heart testing segment of the year, and then suddenly we find ourselves in that flurry of end-of-the-year activities that really start, you know, April, May, and June. So, I, while I'm not, uh, closed to the possibility of something happening, I think the reality is that it might be very difficult to put something in place for this school year. I can tell you that some of the schools are doing other reading-based activities, um, you know, to give students, it's not the Battle of the Books, but, you know, their, their students are certainly, uh, having opportunities, uh, to reinforce their reading. Um, any other questions? Okay. Um, the, we have a couple presentations, as I mentioned. Um, the first one is, um, talking about planned new initiatives within the budget. I'm gonna share this, uh, with Jen Tevis. I can tell you that, um, the things that we're gonna talk about tonight are, um, proposed initiatives. We are currently in, um, uh, you know, kind of a waiting game right now. The, the governor gave his budget address today. I was very excited to hear him say that every K-12 district in, um, the state of New Jersey is expected to receive more state aid in 2016, '17. What that means? $5? Or, you know, we, we won't know. We hopefully will know on Thursday because, um, the, the law requires the department to release state aid figures to us within 48 hours after the governor's budget address. So, we do expect them on Thursday. That will generate some additional work for Mr. Tevis as, um, we kind of try to fold those into the budget and see how much of, or how many of the new initiatives we're gonna talk about tonight, we can actually fit into the budget structure. So, um...
You did say today that there would be additional money for the district.
Well, right.
You did say this time and now, that could be a dollar.
Right. We, we don't know how that's gonna play out, but, uh, we're hopeful that at least it's not a decrease and that, um, you know, they had done a little foreshadowing there that we might not necessarily expect to get the same amount. So, I took that as a very positive, uh, indication. Um, so, you know, we have our mission statement. Um, this continues to, uh, drive our discussions with regard to the budget. Uh, in terms of the budget proposals for next year, um, across the board, we are looking to maintain class size. We are looking to maintain our programs at the elementary level, um, to maintain teaming at the middle school level, to maintain our core and elective programs at the high school level. We are looking to implement a new ABA class that's, uh, a program targeted to our autistic students. We have, um, an early elementary program currently at William Mason. As those students, um, age and develop, we need to have the next level of program, uh, in place so we can advance those students and maintain them, uh, within the district. We are looking, and that will be the focus of my next presentation, to expand the oral language program at the middle school level. Um, we are looking at the high school to expand, uh, some of the elective programs and, uh, have some new equipment included in the budget for athletics. Uh, again, as I mentioned, um, at the moment, we're ac, we're not able to accurately compute the amount of money that we will have available for these new initiatives, um, but we are expecting that we should be able to finalize that for our next board meeting on March 8th. In terms of, uh, what's going on at the elementary level, um, we are going to more fully implement iReady. That is a program that, uh, provides tools for our teachers to use in terms of diagnostic assessment, um, with regard to, um, student performance. It measures growth, and, and we would look to do those assessments three times during the course of the year. Um, it, it really is, uh, something that we feel is, is very beneficial in terms of data that the teachers will have. At, um, middle school level, our big targeted focus will be, as I mentioned, um, expanding the oral language, uh, program in grades 6, 7, and 8. At the high school level, we are looking to, uh, potentially implement new courses, uh, an AP art history course, Spanish culture and communication, and fashion marketing. Uh, as I mentioned, the special services, uh, area, we are looking to, uh, grow our program to be able to maintain some of those, uh, students, uh, within the district. Uh, that program is currently housed at William Mason School. In terms of technology, we are looking to acquire some tablet devices for the lower grade levels. Um, kindergarten and first grade, um, find those devices much easier to use, uh, rather than the Chromebooks, um, largely due to the keyboarding that's required to use the, the Chromebooks effectively. So, we're looking to, uh, acquire those devices. Um, our smartboards, many of them have been around for five years or so, as with the teacher laptops, so we are looking to be able to replace that equipment as it, uh, kind of ages out of its useful life. We're looking to purchase three full Chromebook carts for Lazar and two at the high school, and then, uh, four Chromebook carts, carts without the Chromebooks, uh, to spread amongst the, um, elementary schools because right now we have Chromebooks carts with, for example, 30 Chromebooks in them. We don't typically have 30 students in a class, so the acquisition of additional carts will allow us to break those sets of, uh, Chromebooks into smaller units so we can, uh, spread them out a little bit more effectively, uh, at the elementary level. Um, in terms of athletics, uh, we are looking to be able to, uh, expand and create a boys' volleyball program at the high school level, uh, so we would be looking to include two coaching stipends to accomplish that.
What's your favorite game?
Um, boys' volleyball is in the spring. The girls play in the fall, boys are in the spring.
That'd be J.B. and varsity.
J.B. and varsity. Yeah. Um, in terms of curriculum development, uh, next year, the department is, uh, requiring the implementation of what's called the Next Generation Science Standards in grades 6 through 12. So, we would be looking to purchase textbooks that are aligned to those standards, uh, to be able to implement that into the curriculum. Uh, we would also need to purchase some additional textbooks to support the expansion of the oral language program at the middle school level. Okay, I'm gonna turn things over to Jim and, uh, let him walk you through the...
Thank you, Dr. Modra. Again, I just want to preface, uh, I'm just gonna spin it, just a, uh, quick, uh, refocus view of some of the facilities and capital improvement projects that we're looking at for the 16, '17 school year. Again, I do want to note that these aren't just preliminary, uh, at this point, they're not, uh, necessarily going to, well, these are not necessarily going to make it into the budget, but, uh, priority needs, uh, at this point that we're, uh, considering. So, that being said, uh, at the Cedar Hill Elementary School, we're looking to, uh, purchase some, uh, additional PA speakers. Uh, this is, uh, primarily for, um, uh, for announcements, uh, in events of a lockdown emergency or anything like that. We're trying to make sure that every single building is properly and adequately covered. Uh, we're actually in very good shape. This is just the, the one piece that we had left, and it's one school, and we'll be 100 percent where we want to be with that. Uh, we have an ongoing, uh, maintenance of, uh, repairing, replacing window blinds. It's not just Cedar Hills, uh, in a number of the schools where the need exists, and just basic painting, uh, in selected classrooms and hallways, uh, is a, make, summer maintenance project. Hilldale School, we're looking at, uh, potentially, uh, doing the last piece of our, uh, our initiatives. It's been about four years, uh, in the running now of, uh, carpet removal and, uh, replacing classrooms and hallways with, with tiles. Uh, the media center is the, uh, one area left at Hilldale, so that's something we're looking to potentially put into this budget. Uh, we're also gonna be, uh, looking to, uh, do our gym curtain replacement in the all-purpose rooms. It's something that we contract out. Uh, it's to be, uh, certified, certified, the whole nine yards, so we'll bring a professional for that. And, uh, we're looking to upgrade some, uh, student bathroom faucets, um, something, an initiative actually, that the, uh, building principal has been asking for, for a number of years, so we're gonna look to do that. At the Valley View School, um, we're looking at potentially replacing not one, but two of playground slides. There's two playgrounds over at that school, and, uh, both slides, uh, over the past year or so were significantly damaged beyond, you know, being able to be repaired, so we're looking at possible replacements. Am I quote-up at this point? Thank you. Um, again, you know, same, uh, initial, uh, maintenance, ongoing maintenance, window blinds, painting, uh, and again, uh, at that school as well, carpet removal, tile replacement. Uh, at the William Mason School, we're just, we're getting into some of the bigger projects. We do have a couple of them, primarily roofs. Uh, you know, the, the current roof, where they were in right now, uh, we did, uh, boiler replacements at a number of our schools. This year, it's gonna be, uh, back to roofs. Uh, these are actually gonna be the last, uh, these are the last sections of roofs, uh, that'll have us totally caught up in terms of where we were. When I started here, uh, seven years ago, uh, we had to hit every single build, uh, had a number of, uh, roof issues, uh, that had to be addressed, and these are actually the last pieces, uh, to be, bring us up to, uh, you know, where we want to be in terms of, you know, no leaks, which is always a good thing. Um, we're looking to, um, possibly install an adult bathroom over at the, uh, William Mason School. This is something that we looked at about three or four years ago, ran into a slight glitch, uh, so we're looking to potentially, we're able to overcome that, so we're, we're looking to make that happen. Um, we're also looking at the William Mason School, there's always been, this is an ongoing issue now for a number of years, and that's the student drop-off pickup. Anybody that has students in the William Mason School areas knows what I'm talking about. It's, you know, potentially a dangerous situation, so we're looking to address that by redesigning the, uh, front parking lot area, do some, uh, curb work and things like that to make that happen. Uh, at Woodmont School, we're looking to, uh, install some solar LED lighting. There's been an ongoing request for a number of years along that path that goes from the, uh, back into the school, uh, down to the, uh, the lower parking lot. Uh, looking to repair some windows and latches. This is, uh, just basically a maintenance item, but it's a, a very necessary one. And a couple of water fountain upgrades, the building principal had been, uh, looking In terms of our middle school, uh, we're looking for another large, uh, project that's gonna be, take a significant portion of our, uh, our budget for capital facility needs, uh, and that's a partial roof replacement of three sections over at that build. Another ongoing need having to do with school buses at the, uh, middle school is the, looking to expand that front driveway. Um, again, uh, you know, busing is a, a very serious concern, uh, in terms of safety, making sure that our kids are safe when they're being picked up and dropped off, uh, so we're looking to, uh, evaluate that and potentially do something in this budget for that. Um, the, at the high school, uh, we're actually looking there to do not so much a roof replacement project, but this is more of a, it's called brick repointing. Uh, has the same end result if it's not maintained properly, and that's why you have leaks. So, this would remedy that. Uh, we're also looking to do, uh, purchase of, uh, some permanent perimeter fencing at portions of the, uh, new synthetic turf athletic fields. Um, and, uh, an initiative actually that the superintendent, uh, had talked to me about some time ago is looking to purchase a, a used box truck, uh, that we could use for transporting the band equipment, uh, because it's been, uh, rather difficult over the past several years in terms of rentals. And leave it. Let's see, glasses. All right. Go.
I did, oh, I don't know. I think that's an idea. Yeah, same. Okay.
I'll figure that out for you. District-wide, a few, uh, initiatives that we're looking to do. These would affect, you know, one, two, three, maybe all the buildings. Uh, looking to do a number of parking lots, sidewalk paving repairs. This one, we're gonna hit pretty much every single school building. Uh, we're looking to refurbish, uh, scoreboards at, uh, various, various, uh, elementary schools, the gyms, a couple of the schools, actually. Um, and then some basic maintenance items. We're looking to potentially, uh, replacing one of our, uh, dump trucks with a, with a salter. And, uh, we're looking to do one more of our rewiring projects. This has been an ongoing technology initiative, uh, by Austin, and he uses, actually, we do this in-house, and to save significant amount of money by doing that over the past several years, and, uh, this, this time is gonna be Hilldale, what we're gonna be looking to do. And in order for cafeteria, we're looking to, uh, in terms of equipment, uh, we need a couple of dishwashers and a walk-in freezer for the middle school. And, uh, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, yeah, as I mentioned before, um, we are, um, you know, we've been told initially that we should, uh, perhaps expect flat funding. Now that we've been given an indication that we should receive a little bit more money, we're anxiously awaiting Thursday's figures to see where we will, uh, end up and where that will allow us, uh, to take the budget. So, obviously, you know, we're, we're not anticipating a decrease in state aid at this point, but it's quite possible that the amount of additional aid may not allow us to accomplish all of the new initiatives that we've presented tonight. So, um, we will take a hard look at that and, uh, be able to solidify those recommendations, hopefully for the, uh, March 8th meeting. So, um, just to take a look, we do intend to continue to present information on the proposed budget at, uh, each of the upcoming board meetings. Um, our, uh, March 22nd meeting will be the time when the board will need to adopt a tentative budget for submission to the Executive County Superintendent for review and approval. Um, and, uh, Mr. James will have some, a couple weeks to review that and then return it to us so we can advertise, um, and hold our public hearing on the budget on April 26th. At that point, um, you know, we do open it for, uh, public comment, and then the board would ultimately adopt the final budget that evening. Um, so I don't know if, if any of the board members have, um, questions on budget? Mike?
I have a question for Jim one, or two. Just looking at bigger ticket for what I think. Um, one school, it's, uh, at, at one school, it says redesign the parking lot, but another, just so I'm clear.
Sure.
It says, uh, uses a different, uh, there. Uh, is there a difference between actually designing and...
Yes.
So, the one we might be planning, and that might be in the following year, is that what we're saying?
That's correct.
And Lazar would be in this year, because it's paved and expanded.
Yes, the one we're, uh, we're talking about designing, that has to be, uh, potentially the school bus issue, the student drop-off, and, uh, and, uh, we, we have to do an extensive redesign of that entire area. We're not, we're not even sure just yet exactly how it's gonna wind up looking, uh, so it's gonna be more extensive.
Is it a two-year project, possibly?
It could be. It's possible. We're gonna try to do it more. Um, but it depends upon what, you know, how extensive it's gonna be once we, once we start looking at it. Uh, the other ones were cut dry and, you know...
So, that we are actually doing roof soil and...
That's for sure.
Okay. Uh, and, am I correct that the roofs are one of the bigger?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, they're the way of...
Without a doubt.
Yeah.
So? I, I know that on March 8th, we'll have the state aid bigger, and we'll build with a long and longer process. I, I assume that we'll be getting figures connected to each of these program enhancements at that time, so we'll know what each of them will cost or what's budgeted for them released. Okay, thank you very much.
Karen?
Thank you. Um, Jim, a number of years ago, we kind of talked with the idea, uh, based on board members' suggestion of eliminating the traffic issue and cleaning the store by putting a roadway, actually, climbing school, especially now that it's closed. Is that just kind of like way out of budget or...
It's significantly more expensive, uh, and, uh, we still have that continued concern that, um, you know, it's very narrow, um, you know, when you go on that one side towards the back, um, in terms of where, you know, stat parking currently is. I mean, you know, you could potentially look at moving that parking, uh, to another part of the facility, I suppose, but again, that would add to the cost. Um, this is something that, you know, we know within budget, at least, it's, uh, it's within the affordable range, and it's, it's something that we, we believe will work. We've talked, uh, with, uh, the school administration. They agree that this is, uh, something that, believe, will make it, make it much better than it currently is.
I, I just had, uh, two quick questions. The partial roof replacement in Lazar and the high school, uh, that will not affect the solar panels, those two schools?
No.
It's away from those areas?
Uh, hmm, I don't wanna say exactly without saying, but I know that if I ask that exact question, it will affect it. Uh, it's not gonna hurt it. Uh, I don't know if it impacts next to it adjacency, you know, we may have to temporarily assemble for safety reasons and then put, you know, back up, but I know for a fact it's not gonna decrease it if that was your question.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we look at the warranty, and we do that, too, because we have the architect who comes on, he uses those proposals...
Jim, we just briefly, I'm sorry.
We, we work with our architects, uh, on those actual proposals, and that is something that we absolutely look at in terms of the warranty. Uh, we'll bring the, uh, the manufacturer actually out, uh, before we do any work whatsoever, um, and, and make sure that, you know, we're not gonna void the warranty on the roof or anything of that nature, or the solar panels themselves as well.
Thank you. Karen?
Um, I just want to thank Doctor Robert for that box, the box truck, uh, used box truck for the, um, marching band. Uh, it seems like every other marching band has a nice truck with your name on it, and, uh, we don't, so I think it would add to school spirit to have something like that, but thanks for thinking of it.
We also spend a lot renting trucks. It's a very cumbersome process, so this will serve two purposes.
Yes, great. Thank you.
Maybe we'll use it like, like... Make it a duty one. That's some junk.
The, the other question I wanted, uh, and I know that you dispose of certain electronic equipment, uh, and, and are you able to resell smartboards or laptops, or is that not possible?
Oh, it, it probably is possible. Uh, Austin's has seen a lot of success, uh, in placing it on the, uh, the website, whenever we, uh, dispose of equipment. We're not just making it and throwing it in dumps, uh, you know, unless it's totally, you know, broken, we'll repair. Uh, but we've been doing that now for about three years, I believe, and we've generated some, some miscellaneous... miscellaneous income as a result of it. Which, we're actually, yeah, we do make some money off that. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for expanding the AP offerings, if that does come to fruition at the high school by providing the students potentially with APR history. I think it's necessary to continue to expand the AP offerings. It has a direct impact on positioning our students for success in getting into the colleges of their choices. I do have a question about how Spanish culture and communication is different from the present Spanish offerings? How's that different from Spanish one or two?
This program would really more be targeted toward special ed students who, they still are held to the same standard in terms of completing two years, two years of world language study for their graduation requirements. So this would be their success, of course, to a Spanish one would allow them to develop more proficiency in the language without some of the more difficult aspects in terms of complicated verb conjugations and things like that. So I think it will serve that population very well.
And I have, if you know, will, will the implementation of the additional, the three classes at the high school require additional staffing or are we doing that by one, six, five, then are we doing courses around?
I think we have to, at this point, we probably will need to get a handle on the course selection process and see where that shakes out in terms of staff members who might be available to assume, you know, teaching those elective courses.
Well, the, since we're taking, if we implement Spanish culture and communication, will that be replacing potentially perhaps a section?
That someone is already teaching.
Of Spanish one or Spanish two?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
I still have a couple more questions. The curriculum, so implementation of next generation science standards, that curriculum hasn't been written yet, I assume. So part of the cost is going to be curriculum writing?
Ask Mrs. Withering to speak to that. No, we're doing the six through 12 this year and therefore next year we'll have the resources and it'll all go into implementation mode at the same time.
Oh, okay. So then what we'll need is the textbooks to facilitate the implementation?
Yes, we wrote the, or they're writing the curriculum independent of having a textbook because you should be able to teach the course without any particular book. And then the teachers will have, are working with Dr. Schwartz, our supervisor, on what best, what textbook will be best suited for the individual courses that we have.
Do you have other questions coming up?
No, I won't.
Just thank you.
Just one more question. The smart boards, the, that's just the board itself, it's not including the projectors or is it the whole kit and all?
We may very well be going in a different direction in terms of replacing those things. Austin has been working on trying to determine what the best piece of technology would be to replace those smart boards.
Are we able to lease them rather than purchase them?
I think that's always an option when you have a significant equipment purchase that you could do a lease purchase.
You're referring to a lease purchase or are you talking about actually just leasing? That's what I thought, yeah. I'm not so sure about that.
Yeah, that I don't know that. I thought you were talking about just a lease purchase.
I do have one more question. The implementation of the elementary age ABA program, that will bring children back into district? Are there children that are currently serviced out of district because we don't have that program?
I'm not sure about the age. I actually have Jennifer to say was putting the final, final touches on the needs assessment. That was actually part of one of our goals for this year and I should be able to have that too by the end of the week. I know that we are definitely bringing some children back, but I don't know if it's for that program or the younger age group. But yes, you know, some kids coming back.
In that two curriculum meetings ago, Austin was at our meeting and he was coming up with some ideas that the superintendent mentioned, young, about alternatives with the smart boards and other ways to go. So we'll wait in here back and hear him on that.
Any other questions? I just wanted to, while you're, you're going to be moving on to the next presentation, I just wanted to welcome this evening our mayor, Mr. Sandem, to our meeting tonight. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
So I'm leaving now, I'll get the next presentation. Okay. So tonight I want to give you all an overview of the recommendations and the work that has gone on the part of the Lazar Middle School World Language and Scheduling Committee. This actually, this process began in June of last year when the World Language Task Force made their presentation to the board and included some recommendations which then became folded into one of our district goals for the year. Oh, I did it too. Okay. Big thumbs. There were a number, a large number of people that were involved in the committee. We actually began meeting in October, having representation from the administrators, building level administrators, two of our supervisors and teachers representing the various grade levels, subject areas at Lazar. And I'm very grateful to, to them for their participation. So the recommendation that the World Language Task Force made in June was to create a program that's more aligned to our peer schools and focuses on the criteria of the model world language program as defined by the state. So to take a little bit deeper look at that, what the state asks us to do is to ensure that all students in grades K to eight study a world language, to ensure that local assessment and public recording of student outcomes for K to 12 world language programs take place at all levels. World language study is actually one of the academic areas that is included in the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards for grades K to 12. The administrative code, and the citation is there, refers to the American Council of the Teachers of Foreign Language standard, which for the band of grades from six through 12 recommends that students receive one class period a day in terms of world language instruction. The goal of the content standards in terms of what students should acquire through their involvement in world language instruction is that students will learn the ability to communicate effectively and with confidence in a variety, a variety of settings in the target language, to develop an appreciation for cultural difference, differences and to value language learning for the long-term worth that it has in fostering personal work-related or financial success in what we all know is an increasingly global world. In the fall, Lisa Howard, our supervisor of world languages administered a survey to all the current students that we had enrolled in our world language classes. And also there was an online component for parents to participate. There were 838 students that gave their input as well as 265 parents. The survey results showed strong support for an expansion of the world language program at the middle school level. When the committee began to meet in October, at our initial meeting, we established some priorities and some concerns that we wanted to focus on as we were working through the process. These included the need to provide our students a better world language experience. Currently, for those who aren't aware, our students have two marking periods, one marking period each of two different languages in the sixth grade, one marking period each of two different languages in the seventh grade, and then a full year of world language study in the eighth grade. We also wanted to try to maintain the teaming concept at the middle school level as best as we can. We wanted to have a minimum impact on our personnel. We wanted to review how the specials programs might be impacted by our, our changes. And we wanted to address the issue of the large number of students that are currently in our honors level courses, classes, I should say. As part of the process, groups of, groups, teams comprised of teachers, supervisors and administrators visited middle schools in Madison, Burns Township and Westfield. We had the opportunity to observe classes in, in a couple of different languages at various grade levels, to meet with the teachers of those programs and also the building level administrators to talk about the program components and the scheduling that takes place in the district. I know this is tiny, but we'll definitely have this posted online tomorrow. We looked at a number of districts that we like to compare ourselves to in terms of what's happening in other places with regard to world language study. Monville is definitely an outlier in terms of the way we have our program structured. Most of these other schools, and they included, in case the print is too tiny, Burns Township, Madison, Westfield, Mountain Lake, Summit, Livingston, Chatham and Ridwood. With very few exceptions, the students begin with a full year of study at the sixth grade level and then continue again in seventh, eighth grade with those three years comprising the equivalent of a level one world language study. And then students who have successfully completed middle school world language then continue on to level two study as freshmen at the high school level. And that is hopefully what we would be able to provide for our students in making the program modifications that we're recommending. We did, as I mentioned, talk about honors classes. And currently the number of students in honors level classes represents about one-third of the student population in, in each grade level. This percentage is, is really high and significantly higher than what we would normally consider to be gifted and talented students. Those are the students that we would typically see involved in, in honors level courses. The committee recommended that the honors level language arts program be eliminated and all of those students, all students in sixth grade would take a regular language arts curriculum. We would maintain the honors program in sixth, seventh and eighth grade math, seventh and eighth grade language arts and seventh, eighth grade science. And we are looking to revise the selection criteria for the honors programs for 2016-17. The rationale for eliminating the sixth grade language arts honors program is several. The recommendations from the fifth grade teachers are not consistent between buildings. So what happens when those students reach sixth grade is that, you know, it becomes a very challenging experience for them to begin with. Moving from elementary school to middle school is a, is, can be a difficult transition. Obviously, the rigor of the academics ramps up and we just want to afford the, all of the students, the best chance for success that we can offer them at that middle school level. We, each year, there are numerous examples of students who are recommended for the honors level, they're placed in the honors level even though they don't really meet the selection criteria and these students struggle. So we feel that eliminating the honors will provide a better experience. The teachers will have the ability to differentiate the instruction for students who can benefit from a more rigorous approach, but we will not have the tracking, the difference between honors and regular level. In terms of scheduling options, the committee discussed a variety of scheduling options, including some that we had observed when we did our site visits at the various middle schools. The committee felt very strongly that it was important that our class periods not be shortened to something less than 40 minutes, which is what we currently have. They also felt strongly that the double period of language arts was valuable and that we should not look to reduce that. We did not see block scheduling as a viable alternative at the middle school level. And we also looked at some variations in the lunch schedule and changes to specific electives offered at each grade level. The recommendation that the committee is making that, is that we implement a three-year program of study in world language. It will allow us to be compliant with the dictates of the common core, or the core curriculum content standards. It will allow us to adequately prepare our students for that level two instruction at the high school as freshmen. I've observed some of those classes and in all honesty, the level of performance with very few of the exceptions, it, we really put the students at a disadvantage in terms of what is expected of the curriculum at the level two study, having only just that single year of preparation at the middle school level. We also feel that because the students will come in with a higher level of proficiency in, in ninth grade, that there's a greater chance that they will not be frustrated and perhaps elect to discontinue their study of world language after completing their graduation requirements, which could allow us to increase our numbers at those higher levels, ultimately perhaps having more students in the AP levels of world language. So we, we are proposing to change slightly the proposed electives at the grade levels. In sixth grade, each of the electives will be for a marking period and all of the students in sixth grade would take art and then would have three of the remaining four electives interested in, where we nutrition, family, consumer science, TV production and computers. The same would be true at the seventh grade level. All students would take a marking period of art and then three of the four electives that we will provide at the seventh grade level, technology, education, nutrition, family and consumer science, TV production and computers. At the eighth grade level, students would take four of the five electives. Art would not be required, it would be one of the possible electives. We would have art, technology, education, nutrition, family and consumer science, TV production and computers. So in putting and gathering the information that we need to be able to budget adequately in terms of staffing and materials, what we will be doing, I believe Thursday, is pushing out through the parent portal in Genesis, a world language preference survey that will allow us to gather preferences from students who are currently in fifth, sixth and seventh grade in terms of the world language that they would, they can rank them in, from their first preference to their fourth preference, French, Italian, Mandarin and Spanish in terms of what they would prefer to study next year because we'll be, we'll need that information in terms of staffing as we plan. So those, that's what we're looking at in, in terms of implementing. I think the folks on the committee are excited about the possibility of taking the world language program where it needs to be at the middle school level. And I would open things up to any questions that the board members might have.
Okay. Renee?
Yeah.
Dr. Rostar, first of all, I applaud the initiative and of course, anything that improves educational opportunities for our students is good. And we've understood that there have been deficiencies in the world language program for a long time and I'm very happy to see you're addressing those. This is the issue I have with it. And I've always said, academics, always raise the bar with academics, but you know how I feel, that I never want to say we're going to raise the bar on academics and we're going to do it by cutting the arts. And that's really what we've done because the schedule right now at Lazar basically gives students, I guess 16 marking periods of quote-unquote cycle-related courses. They have, you know, three a year and then that cycle course- cycle course, in sixth grade they have two now, and in seventh grade they have two now. And those are being taken away, so you've really cut their, the arts down by twenty-five percent. And the thing that I have really more of a difficulty with is that, in these things, the proposed electives, I didn't hear anything about band, chorus, or orchestra, where do those fit in?
I'm not really sure what happened to the, I must have copied the wrong presentation, because there were slides in the presentation that reflected the fact that we still will maintain the ability for students to be enrolled in a band, orchestra, and choir. Those students, that will be their choice. So unfortunately, you know, we're not expanding the number of classes that we have. So, in effect, the world language slot in the schedule is taking one of, for seventh and eighth, for sixth and seventh grade, one of those periods that was available for electives. So, the students who choose to be involved in music, that will be their elective, and they would not be enrolled in the art, technology, education cycle. So, it would be one or the other, which is exactly the structure that they currently have in eighth grade, currently.
But see, this is where I have a real, real difficulty with it. Because you're now telling the students, if they do band, chorus, or orchestra, they will never have art, they will never have computers, they will never have the technology, and what's going to happen is that you're going to have, maybe not even students, but parents making that decision, you're not going to give up computers or technology, you're not doing band, chorus, orchestra, you're going to do the computers and technology. And I think you're going to absolutely decimate the number of kids in the music program, because you're telling these kids, if you do music, you have to give up everything else.
Well, I don't, I don't know that it is that they're exclusively giving up everything else. While they will not be able to be scheduled in to those courses, Lizar Middle School has a fairly robust club program that would also provide the opportunity for students to be involved in art, you know, TV production in an after-school setting. So while it's not the same as, as taking a cycle class, there are still opportunities for students to pursue those interests outside of school.
Do they have a technology, education club, or a computers club? It says proposed elective seventh grade and eighth grade. We, when I was first on the board in 2006, a very similar proposal to this one, in fact, an identical proposal to this one, was put before the board, and we shot it down back then for this exact reason, that we were bringing the kids in the music classes in a situation where they would get no other cycle courses. And there may be a way to work this out, to change some of the cycles around, or change what we do in one of the cycles, but I am going to have a very difficult time supporting a program that's going to basically put a gun to kids' heads and say, "If you do music, you can't get any art, you can't get any technology, and you can't get any computers." I think you're going to decimate that program.
I will tell you that there were extensive discussions about this topic amongst the committee, but I think the end result of those is that we are, as a district, not meeting our obligation in terms of the core content standards, in terms of what we are supposed to be delivering to students. And while I recognize the value of those elective courses, the fact that, that parents and our students would prefer to take those, I don't think we can remove that obligation to deliver the curriculum that the state has determined we ought to be delivering to our students.
And you said that you want to keep the two periods of the Language Arts. I mean, but this is basically my philosophy. You have a given amount of curriculums devoted to quote-unquote academics, you have a certain amount that's devoted to non-academics. You don't just keep on taking away right-brain activity and substituting it with left-brain activity. I mean, respectfully, if you're going to increase the world language, that should be coming out of other academic courses. It shouldn't just be, "We're going to beef up the academics by cutting the arts."
That's certainly one side of the argument. You know, we could probably debate it twelve different ways in terms of where the time should come from in order to implement this. And, you know, the committee talked about it, and then the committee did, you know, this was the committee's recommendation.
And I also think, if we are going to stick with just this one cycle period, there needs to be some kind of modification there that allows students to somehow be in a position to be able to take both music and some other enriching activities to make them well-rounded. Because, again, you know, the academics, academics are wonderful, but I don't want to see us putting out a group of students that has, you know, no, very little cultural background, and has very little going for them of them being book-smart. And I know we're not there yet, but we're kind of heading that way as a nation, and it gives me a lot of consternation.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mike to a degree. I think we all agree we need three years of foreign language. The problem is where to get the time from. When you went visiting these other locations, and there are some pretty good school systems there, I'm sure they have band and orchestra and choir in their programs, and I don't know how they implement it, and if it is implemented. I see one here that TV productions, we offer that in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I don't know of many middle schools that offer that as an elective, and I'm not saying it's good, bad, or different. I'm just trying to say, we need time for electives. And I think it is important to have music, band, and orchestra to a degree. And I'm just looking at, seeing what some of these other districts may or may not have done, might be able to give us more information for future budget discussions. And also, of these electives here, for like, I'm looking at the sixth grade, everybody takes art for one marking period, right? And then there's four others listed, interest in, put it in, in, I might have been borrowing, nutrition, TV production. Does this mean that kid takes TV production all three years, sixth, seventh, and eighth? I don't know.
Not necessarily.
I don't know if it was, I'd rather have news, that's just me, but it's just an idea. Looking for time and space to give the music. I think the music is, then, goes to the high school, they get more music, enhances the music program at the high school. And it's just, I'm just looking at the type of electives that are offered, that's all.
Okay.
I definitely support the three-year of the foreign language, because they weren't applied to the state. But it's just an idea, just offering my two cents, where you might be able to come up with that idea of the, with the music.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I'll, you quite have some, I'm listening very carefully, and I'm not quite clear what would happen. So, let's say a student in fifth grade, you know, was very musically inclined, whatever, does that mean they would go without music in the sixth grade? Is it, is it, that, you know, happen?
No, they, if, a child could elect to continue in music in sixth grade.
Sixth.
And seventh and eighth.
Okay, but let's just stick with sixth.
But if they chose to be involved in music, they could be involved in either band, chorus, or orchestra, or a combination of band and chorus, or orchestra and chorus. They would then not have space in their schedule to take additional electives, such as the TV production, the art, so.
All right, so if the student wants to, yeah, I see, I understand that. Could it just quickly, as we proceed here, explain to me very encapsul, what is interest in, what is interest in inquiry? I mean, the others are sort of pretty clear on what, you know, what they are, what their description, but interest in.
Yeah, it's a, it's a little bit.
I mean, I'm not saying there's anything wrong, I mean, interest in.
You compared you a better job with that than I could. Briefly, it's, it's more like our humanities research course. It's for the sixth grade, and they basically do what the course describes. They take what their, you know, their different interests, and they do inquiry-based study of it.
And that's for one marking period?
Right.
Dr. Moon, address.
I would agree with Charlie. It'd be nice to know what the other districts were doing, and how they handled the balance between the arts and music. I also had another question. How much music do these kids take? I'm unfamiliar with music programs. Do they take, is it one period a day?
It's one period a day.
For each, or the different?
If they're, if they're involved in one of those groups, band, chorus, or orchestra.
Does that leave them time to do other? How does that not leave them time to do other activities?
You mean the electives?
Yeah.
Well, currently, they do, because currently, the, for, at least in grades six and seven, the world language is part of the elective cycle. In eighth grade, it's, they don't have that option. It's either music or the elective. So what we're doing is, we're really pushing that, that schedule structure down into grade seven and six. That, that's currently the structure that we have in eighth grade, and if they're involved in music, they're not taking that elective cycle.
And is there any way to somehow make it possible for these kids to take those electives, or is that just some?
There's not enough time in the day.
Just kind of nine.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say this, positive, I, I know this is jumping topics, but the idea of, as they come into sixth grade, because we're coming from four different elementary schools, adjusting the issue about honors, I think has some very positive things to it, because each school is different, the recommendations as a staff are different. And I think letting, considering all the pressures that a young person is under anyway going into sixth grade, I mean, it's a, it's a momentous move for them. Letting them sort it out in a more unified way as they move into the next couple of years, I think that's a very interesting and possibly beneficial move on the, on the part of the staff. I'm just, I'm very positive about that, okay? I think it could be very, very good.
Just one, one other question, you asked that. How far apart are the kids when they come into middle school as far as their abilities in sixth grade, and whether or not they should be in the honors program? I know there's differences in recommendations, but are they all at the same central level, and they're just not receiving the recommendations, or is there a difference in what they're actually learning at the different elementary schools?
Mrs. Carr, would you like to speak to that?
I think the, the recommendations that are made by elementary schools, you know, oftentimes are not completely consistent, so that when they come into sixth grade, oftentimes the teachers, why not necessarily that they're at different levels, sometimes it's maturity, sometimes it's anxiety, sometimes, you know, there's just so many levels when ten and eleven-year-olds are coming to big, huge Lizar. So I think for the teachers to come in, it's not necessarily that the children are far apart, or that there's, there's just maturation, there's interest levels, and the way they run their DLA programs now is such that there's choice, children are reading books at their own levels, they're, you know, there's just such growth in those first six months, much of it just being comfort level. You know, in middle school, we know, there's a lot of, you know, hormonal rages going on and everything, so, you know, it just gives those even five or six months just to catch up. So I think the teachers, you know, not necessarily that there's just this vast amount of academic level, but there's just a social emotional feed, that I think they can sort everything out, and then they're all making judgment based upon the same playing field to go into seventh grade.
I just want to make sure that it wasn't an issue with the education at the different elementary schools.
Oh, no, I, I'm not at all. I'm not at all.
Well, you know, you never, no, there's so many, yeah, not to be negative, but I think the idea of predestination, as you're going into sixth grade, you know.
But I'll say, Mike.
Not the greatest thing, so I think that this is a very good idea to let the teachers consistently sort out there on, you know, where they're headed in the next two years, I think.
My, my two cents, I think that's a really good idea. And as, as an individual who's been a parent in this district for so long, this has been a thorny issue for many, many years, and it's a matter of finding the appropriate balance with band, with activities, and of course now with, with core curriculum. I'd like to thank the committee members for taking the time, and I agree with Charlie, with Mr. Brown. I wouldn't mind it if we were to find out how band and a few of the other activities could possibly be satisfied, but I think ultimately the goal is to do what some of these other well-performing districts are doing, and also what we know we need to do with respect to curriculum. There have, for years, been questions from people within the district, even those who teach in the high school, about the level of adequacy of students as they move up from the middle school to the high school, and we can certainly increase the level of proficiency with the, this type of learning environment in the middle school for world language. So I personally believe it's a good idea, perhaps with a few tweaks. And I do think that at, at the end of the day, there will be higher proficiency in the high school, which is what it's all about, and potentially students actually studying world language in the future and staying in. I think we also, last year at the league, correct me if I'm wrong, had an issue with students staying in the higher-level classes in world language. This might create a yearning desire for them to stay in it as they might be more proficient.
Just one final thought. And I do believe that there was an effort to say, "No, we're not going to cut back on music," which on paper, it hasn't been done, and, you know, Mike, you're right. The opportunities to do music are the same as they were before. The problem is that it becomes more distasteful because of what they have to give up. This was my recommendation. Can we put this on for discussion at curriculum? Because rather than asking that now, I have some thoughts as to some things, some compromises that may be able to accomplish both what the administration wants to do as far as world language, and might, yeah, help balance, you know, what's going on with the specials, that may allow students some opportunities to do all without giving up a little tweaking here and there. I do have some specific ideas that I would like to float, and.
I think that would be probably for an next education curriculum meeting, maybe.
I just want to make sure that we don't make this into a, not that I want to rush to judgment and force this through, but I think we need to be mindful of the timeframe so that, you know, we're in a position to be able to implement. But I certainly think that, you know, having a curriculum meeting is a fine next step.
And could I request, if Mr. Fleishman's available, could he be there? Because obviously, this is his.
Well, I think we probably need Mr. Fleishman and Mrs. Howard as well.
Yes.
I agree with Mike. I think that it would be the topic for curriculum instruction technology to discuss at least, you know, at the next meeting, if, if not to, you know, force any ideas, but just for us to get clarification. I think that that committee, just going by each time that we've met, a lot of positive things come out of the curriculum instruction technology committee to help us understand, you know, what it is that's coming from, again, I use that term, the boots on the ground, knowing what is needed, and I think that's maybe a good place where we could have this.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yes, Karen.
I fully support the three years, three full years of world language. I, I think that we're really not up to our peers in other districts by not doing it. But I do agree with my board colleagues, it would be nice to have the ability to add it back more electives as possible. I wouldn't want to see this delayed. I think this is going to be a difficult, well, maybe difficult implementation, it may not be, but I wouldn't want to see us hash it out for too long. And I'd like to just point out that these recommendations were actually first presented to us on June first of 2015, when the World Language Task Force, I think it was at Lizar Middle School, made their presentation. So this is nothing new to us. We've heard this before, and in fact, they made this, they made two recommendations, and one of them is the one that you presented tonight. And so to the extent that we can get some more information, I, great, but, you know, I, I think we should move forward as quickly as the board is comfortable.
Just to my, I didn't mean by any stretch to, you know, storm the program, just to discuss more values, not to, not to slow things down, I just.
If time is of the essence in our way, maybe Mr. If I may, the essence in our work, maybe Mr. Palmer could share his ideas in writing with the superintendent, but then share his ideas with us. That way we wouldn't be wasting time.
Hopefully happen.
We've been writing to the superintendent and she can give them to us with her.
Right, just to be clear, Dr. Roftar said Mrs. Howard could come to the curriculum meeting. Of course she can. I wasn't even really thinking about the world language part of it. I mean, if the administration.
But they go hand in hand.
Well, no, it's a.
Well, why don't you put your.
Okay, let me just, let me just clarify. I'm not debating about the three full years of world language. I'm really talking about just that one cycle, of course, which really doesn't, I mean, look, I'm not trying to keep Lisa out of the meeting. I'm just saying that it really doesn't affect the recommendation that three full years of world language. I'm talking about the cycles.
Okay.
Senator, again, Senator. Okay, thank you.
Dr. King, can I just add something? During the slide presentation, there was an error and I just want to bring people's attention to it because I gave Dr. Roftar wrong information. Sorry about that. There is no seventh grade honors science, it's just an eighth grade.
Thank you.
There's no seventh grade honors. So we would look to maintain the honors program and in the grade where it exists, which is if we're not adding seventh grade honors science.
Can I just make one more? Actually, this is a question. Now, I know I'm getting old and I'm wrapped with the flu, but I seem to remember that.
Can you say it again? I didn't hear.
You didn't, it wasn't important. I seem to remember that we already eliminated something to do, maybe to initiate this program or when we were looking at tracking, didn't we?
We studied honors.
Absolutely.
I think you mean eliminate the enriched courses. That's what you're talking about, right?
Okay. Well, and I thought that one of the, just in case there's a concern in the community about eliminating the honors, which I agree, I mean, I'm, it's fine with me, but if there is concern, wasn't it one of the, didn't we use the same curriculum as the honors curriculum for whatever courses we? So, I mean, that's possibly an option or some sort of a blend so people don't feel like their children who maybe are ready for honors aren't getting honors.
We currently use one curricula and then it's, you know, the rigor for those students in the class is differentiated, you know, based on their needs. So the same concept would apply.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. With the honors curriculum, one of the things you said was that you feel that we have a percentage significantly higher in honors than what would typically be considered gifted and now gifted and talented. You said about a third of the student population knows in honors. What do you consider would be an appropriate percentage of the students to be in honors?
Well, gifted and talented population in any grade is probably somewhere in the 10 and 12 percent range.
So you would say that you would only want like 10 or 12 percent of the population of those are to be in honors? Is that what you're saying? If not, misunderstood, I just want to understand what you're saying.
Well, I don't, I think that's putting words in my mouth.
No, I don't want to, I just want to.
I think that.
I'm just trying to establish the target.
The point is, is that our honors programs, you know, in, you know, in particular that sixth grade language arts is really oversubscribed compared to what you would normally see based on the typical population and the number, the percentage of gifted students that you would have in any grade level. You know, to have a third of them that would be labeled gifted is highly unusual.
I guess I'm just, just for the sake of the public, I know, yeah, I'm sure there will be some discussion in public. I'm just trying to get a vague idea as to if a third is, in your opinion, too much, what would not be too much? Then just, I'm just trying to figure out if you.
It's higher than honors.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Business administrators report.
Yes, just a real quick, Dr. King, I just want to note for the board and for the public, we recently received a closed hour, one of our longstanding projects, and it had to do with the athletic curve, field playing fields of the high school, which is all a result of the settlement that the district made with PSENG in terms of the power lines. And just wanted to report that we did receive a full $1.5 million wired into our bank account a few weeks ago.
Thank you, Mr. Chivas. Thank you for your perseverance. The project began around 2009 or so.
Yeah, it did, as a matter of fact.
Where we on the rest of money from the state?
ESDA.
Yeah, you can take some shots.
Yes, of course. That is right on top of my desk and is ongoing, is not forgotten.
Committee reports. Anyone?
Sure.
Mike?
We met on February 9th. We discussed the Montpel High School Lizar master schedules. Ms. Woodring shared with the committee a list of all current classes that were running at the middle school and high school that have a low enrollment as per our board policy because we just obviously want to keep track of these and make sure there aren't classes that are running with unusually and unjustifiedly low numbers of students. So we discussed that. We discussed the Battle of Books and as Dr. Roftar stated in her report, the rationale behind the elimination of the competition and the concept of perhaps trying to come up with a competition that would be better and more in line with the curriculum. Ms. Woodring reported that district curriculum writing is moving forward. We briefly discussed the Lizar world language and the schedule only insofar as Dr. Roftar reported that the world language and scheduling committee had completed its work, the fruits of which you saw today. Ms. Woodring said that the last district evaluation advisory committee to representatives from Genesis spoke about their software which would allow teacher, staff, and administrator observations and evaluations to be done electronically, and that program was well-received. And finally, Ms. Woodring discussed the committee's gifted and talented program, which was going to be revised and updated over the summer.
Finance, while we haven't met, we are going to need a meeting. We have talked about February 24th, which means there'll be plenty of time for you to gotten the state aid. Hopefully it'll be at least a week before March 8th. That's a Wednesday. So if the committee members could share with Jim their availability and time, it's a Wednesday, I believe, 4:30. 4:30 is then, what's written? Aaron, 5?
Forty.
Huh?
Five.
Five, 4:40.
Okay.
Five o'clock, five o'clock. At 5:00 AM on the 24th.
Five o'clock.
Don't be late. Deon?
Any other committee reports?
Can I just ask a question? I'm sorry, is it CIT? Were you, were there any courses that ran or began the year below board policy? Or you don't know?
That information is kind of tough to determine because students sign up for a course, but then they have two to three weeks to drop classes. But, you know.
Policy's going to be meeting sometime in March.
Policy?
Will be meeting sometime in March.
Sometime in March. Delegate liaisons, Mr. O'Brien.
Mustang Association, our meeting, and I just mentioned Dr. Roftar, was good enough to attend the Mustang meeting and I think maybe there were one or two concerns which she's already addressed, so I think it was very convenient at that time. I'd also like to mention again, going backwards, the curriculum instruction committee, again, I think was a very positive meeting last year. It gives us a good education as to what's going on in Dr. Roftar and Ms. Woodring being there was very beneficial.
From my point of view. Thank you. Any PTC liaisons? Negotiations?
Yes, thank you, Dr. King. I'm happy to report item L7 on the agenda is approval of the three-year contract with the Montpel Township Administrators Association. I see several in the audience this evening. I'd like to thank my colleagues on the board who are on that committee, Dr. Corleone, Mr. O'Brien, and Dr. Roftar. I'd also like to thank Sharon Carr. She's the only member of the team I see here, and I'm happy to recommend the settlement and that is the last one we have, and we can start up again in a year and a half, Sharon. Start all over again.
Well, you can enjoy that year and a half off.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any additional reports?
I just want to comment on the NTAA. You guys are a pleasure to work with, very professional, and I think everyone in the district should be proud and the community should be proud because we really seem to have developed a good methodology of completing negotiations in a very professional and downright friendly way. And it's very respectful. People should be very proud of that, and I just wanted kudos to the NTAA and kudos to the board as well for the spirit of trying to negotiate in a very positive environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
I agree, except for, who was that through that chair?
Thank you, Dr.
Bobby Knight.
A very playful meeting.
Thank you. Public participation, I'd like to call if anyone who would like to talk about items on the agenda only.
Hi there, Teri Becker, and I'm in Road in Toaco. I'll try to read my notes. I know the issue is done, but I remain disappointed that an enrichment program like Battle of the Books is gone. I understand the reasons, but want to mention to the board that Mountain Lakes maintains Battle of the Books in third grade. I wish we could have thought outside of the box to figure out a way to fit it into our curriculum. As for the budget, I'm always disappointed that there aren't more academic initiatives. I think I saw rewriting science curriculum and one AP class. I wish there was more for our kids in all levels of learning. I noted that there was not a budget item for an SRO officer, and so I'm wondering if that is off the table or if it doesn't need to be included in the budget for the 1617 school year. The discussion about the world language program was really fascinating, but what really, really struck a nerve for me is that, again, we're eliminating an honors class. Honors kids are always the ones that get hit in this district. I heard that there are kids in sixth grade language arts honors that are struggling. I'm sorry about that, but there are also kids that are excelling and without having honors, those kids sit in the back of the classroom and wait for the other kids to finish their work. I've had differentiation explained to me lots and lots of ways. It only works in the best of scenarios. Unfortunately, those don't always exist in our classes. So I would really ask you to think hard about getting rid of honors because those kids really deserve the challenge. There are children that want a challenge. The world is about challenge. Let's not take that away from them. Let's really reconsider that long and hard. If the issue is that five elementary schools do not do uniform recommendations, that really seems like an easy fix to me. Let's get a rubric that they follow. That's what they did years ago. And also maybe control the number of overwrites that parents are requesting to get their kids into honors. No is no, we've been told no, and, you know, it is what it is. But these kids need to be in a challenging environment where the discussion is high-powered and high-paced. I wish it happened in all classes. Levels are important. They're not the evil that this district seems to be portraying them as. And I would just hope that the board would really not continue this precedent of punishing higher achieving kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Freya Richarsky, 21 Gathering Road in Highland. Honestly, I'm not totally vested in Battle of the Books. I'm sorry, Karen. My issue really though, Dr. Roftar, is that my children, neither one of them were engaged in Battle of the Books as participants. But I will tell you, if you haven't been here for one in the past, if you have, you would have seen standing room only. It is one of the few times where you see children supporting other children, parents. Those kids come with signs and you don't even know who they're supporting. My kids have said to me, I'm not in Battle of the Books, ma, but my team is there and the kids from Hilldale are there, and they know the kids from the others. So in terms of all of the support that I have seen in the district coming through about building character and wanting to maintain a force of camaraderie at the school, Battle of the Books is one of the only times where you really do see, and not just for the kids, but the parents get to go. It's an evening event and almost every principal and their kids and everyone shows up. And again, I would ask you, you should see, I, both times with both of my kids, I was like, holy God, you got to get there early for this thing. It's like back to school, ma. And there's a lot of people who go to this. And, you know, I know you're trying to push character, which we desperately need. This was certainly one time. What I am here about is the world language. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I couldn't support you more. The fact that you are asking children to give up an art, a technology, or anything as a parent who has kids in music is atrocious to me. Study after study historically shows that children involved in music and the arts perform higher in all their academic programs. I do not understand that. Last time I checked, last year was, the marching band was the only one at the high school who showed up with a 10-foot trophy. Would that be true, Mr. Fleishman? Did any other place in this board, in this district show up with a 10-foot national trophy? Those kids from that marching band came up from the ground, taking music lessons and art lessons and violin lessons all through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The kids that are going to be in pipin', I'm sure, are from the music teacher's chorus class. Those are your high schoolers that are going to be singing and dancing and doing pipin'. So I would strongly suggest that you can look at the curriculum and do some creative ways to keep both and not have these children give it up. Because even though my kid loves it, I'd be the first person to say to my daughter, sorry, you don't get it next year because you need computers. And that's the way it is. A few years ago, I think, I'm not sure if you were here or not for the curriculum, but in language arts, we combined and have one teacher for English and language arts. Do we need that anymore? Why does one teacher have to teach two 40-minute courses? Maybe you can combine English as it is, ELA, into one 40-minute class, and then you have another 40-minute period open. I believe the interest in inquiry class is relatively new, is it?
Well, that's one of the elective classes, not a standalone class.
I understand, but I'm just, you know, not going to be part of this meeting. I was not part of any of this stuff. But to your point, Mr. Palmer, there's creative ways. We are moving clearly to a project-based curriculum, and my understanding is interest in inquiry teaches kids how to work on projects and make that happen. Well, for the kids who are not taking that class, guess what? They're learning how to do it just by virtue of all their academic classes, and they're not failing. So I think there's some very creative ways to look at the curriculum to find a way to not take the arts and the computer electives away from those children who need to feed into the music and the chorus and the band and so on and so forth that make us a high-achieving district. With that, I actually had a couple of little questions. I'm not really sure from this letter if, right now, as I understand it, at the eighth grade level, the language teachers are not part of the color team processes. Has that changed?
Well, we don't have an individual French teacher assigned to each team. So those teachers do cross the teams.
Well, I can tell you maybe in theory that works, but as a parent who has now been through that process with a high schooler and now coming up the ranks with a sixth grader, it's very challenging. The team works very well. Having a team leader works extremely well in making sure these kids don't have three projects due on the same day. In. In eighth grade, you get a midterm. You get legitimate homework. You get legitimate tests. You get legitimate projects for these full-year language courses. And that was quite challenging for my child, as I'm sure many of the eighth graders. Because now you have three other academic programs on a team giving homework. And by the way, here comes a Spanish or Mandarin teacher who is in a silo over here because they're not part of the team. So all I would say is, as we move to a more academic program for languages, those language teachers need to be on a team. If it's an academic course, and I think it says it right here in your notes, that this is, World Language is a core curriculum. If it's a core curriculum, world language teachers need to be part of the yellow team, the white team, the green team, I forgot the color. They need to be embedded. Because if you're going to raise it to that level as opposed to just the exposure level, which it is at the sixth and seventh grade right now, you need to go through the whole process and look downstream. That's just, you know, I think that's a reality. And then the other thing, I was not clear by reading this note. I'm not clear, and I didn't see it on the presentation, if you're talking about a child that takes a language in sixth grade and has to stay with that same language through sixth, seventh, and eighth, or if they get to pick and choose.
No, it is, it's a three-year commitment. So whatever language they select as a sixth grader, they would continue on for two additional years of study to complete that equivalent of a Level One study in a single language.
So then I have to say, shame on us. And shame on all of us that we would need to waste resources like that. Because I cannot comprehend anywhere that we would say, "A teacher who teaches a language for three, we need three years to make up one." That just doesn't...
We're not doing justice to the curriculum right now in only providing one year of instruction. And trust me, having gone to visit these other schools and watching the eighth graders and their proficiency in the language as a result of three years of study, phenomenal. And we're doing a disservice to our students by not providing them that experience.
I hear what you're saying. I just can't see, what if the child decides after the first year they hate Mandarin? They're stuck for two more years? And then there's an expectation that they have to go into a Spanish, too? Even though they never had Spanish one because they were stuck in Mandarin for three years? I'm not seeing...
We offer first-year World Language study at the high school level. So if they took the three years at the middle school level and wanted to make a change, they could certainly do that at the high school level.
And we are actually, as a board, going to say, "Okay, what you choose in sixth grade, having no knowledge of any of the courses you must stay with for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade." That just doesn't even feel right. How many times have we changed our minds with this?
We would not be unique in that, in implementing that type of structure. It virtually goes on in all of the other districts that were mentioned tonight.
Okay, so then we are accepting of the fact, you know, if the kid's unhappy, then there goes all of, you know, progression through the ranks. Because they're going to do, so they're going to take sixth-grade French, seventh-grade French, eighth-grade French. And I, let me ask this question, just be...
At this point, if I may, I don't mean to cut you short, but we usually try limits.
My first time, I'm sorry. But thank you very much. I really just hope you will give a look at some of those ideas.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Michelle Zimmerman, 79th Drive Drive in Toaco. Actually, and I respect everything you said, Fran, but I want to give a bit of a different perspective from a parent. I have a seventh grader and a fifth grader. And I actually was really excited to see the language initiative and the proficiency. I wanted to address it. My incoming sixth grader, I'm excited she's going to have three years and the chance to be more proficient in a language. I do think that it is important, and I felt our district is behind in that area. I also want to say, my seventh grader has been in choir every year, so therefore she has not had all of the electives. And even though there's some that we felt she's missed, we recognize that there are only so many hours in the day and that there are choices involved with that. The same thing, my fifth grader plans to come in and do band and chorus and gets a lot of enriching art opportunity through that. They actually don't really, you know, art is not as much their thing. I teach them, put me in the sewing at home. So I want to kind of give a little bit of a different perspective on that, that there is the other side of it, and there are only so many hours in the day. I know I don't speak for every parent, but I want to support, just as an individual parent, the core of what you guys are trying to do here. The only thing I personally feel sad than not being able to have, more than anything, is the computers. And I wonder if having the second language arts, maybe there is opportunity to incorporate computers somewhere in there. Because I do think, like Fran said, interest in inquiry, I initially was kind of, well, is she missing that? But she gets so many opportunities to do project work and research in all her other classes in a very effective way. And like I said, I don't feel like she's missing out on so much. I feel like our choice is the chorus and the band and that part of the arts. And I'm okay with it. And I realize that, like I said, there are only so many hours in a day. So just another perspective on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask just a question, Dr. Rovatar? Actually, two, just something clear. Under the proposal, what would sixth grade be again for World Language? They would do it?
In the proposal, they have a full year of one of the four languages they would select.
Oh, okay, so there's no more sample then?
No.
Okay. Question, a child is in sixth grade right now. If they go to seventh grade, what's their, would they have...
They will have two years. They'll have two years of the same language. That will be their experience. As we, you know, they're part of the phase-in program, so they'll get two years. Eighth graders next year will just get their one year. And then the sixth graders will have three full years.
Hi, my name's Joanne Lang, two-second place in Pinewood. I just had a question about the budget. You listed four Chromebook cards for elementary schools, and I was just wondering which one wasn't going to get a Chromebook card? And why not five for all five of them?
I can't tell you that specifically, but I think the purpose is to, you, to, we're taking the equipment that we have and adding to it so that we can adequately spread the Chromebooks out amongst the classrooms. I don't know, Andrea, if you have more detail.
Right, but right now, all the elementary schools have equal amounts of Chromebooks, correct?
I don't think that, I don't think they're equal now.
Okay.
It's so, our, yeah, our technology manager looked at it, looked at the enrollment of all the schools, and he decided, based on the enrollment of individual classes, how he would have to put the Chromebooks in the cards to make sure that it was equitable and equal. And he did that. And so that everybody will have the same percentage as compared to their enrollment.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education. First, I'd like to thank the members of the Board of Education for your time and effort on behalf of the students and the children of Montville. I know you guys put in a lot of effort on it, and citizens appreciate it. The Township Committee appreciates that. I see on your agenda that you have a demographic study coming up. And I would ask that, once it's complete and you've vetted it and make it public, that we get a copy of the Township Committee, send it to the administrator. There are times that information is very useful for us. I'll give you a quick example. We're doing a redevelopment study on Route 46. We've decided to exclude residential development from that task group because we, because some of us knew the impact it would have on Woodmont and Hilldale schools' potential. So having that information could only help us in helping plan the town. Now, what I'm here for really tonight. I was invited to a meeting with Dr. Rovatar, which I readily accepted. I believe in keeping communications as open as possible. I met with Dr. Rovatar, and we discussed several items, including One Montville. During my discussions, at first, I informed her that I was speaking as one Township Committee person, not on behalf of the Township Committee, much as if your board president was speaking individually and not representing the full group. I also told her that the whole Township Committee as a group would have to hear the information and make decisions. I personally told her that I liked the idea of the One Montville. And One Montville put forth the idea of a diversity committee by the Township Committee to be endorsed. And my comment was that I thought that that was adding just an extra layer that didn't need to be there. That if One Montville came up with a list of suggestions themselves, that it would be terrific if they came to the Township Committee and presented it themselves directly to the Township Committee. What I got back was a comment from Mr. Modred, that I was not welcoming of the idea of having a standing committee of One Montville and the Township Committee, disappointing that our mayor does not place higher value on inclusion and acceptance of other people in our community.
You can address me on that, Mr. Sen. Thank you.
That the mayor should reconsider his position, and he would, Mr. Modred would encourage that. Let me clarify something, Mr. Sen. I grew up in the Bronx with all types of people and all types of friends, of all different faiths, ancestries, origins, races. Nothing mattered except whether you could play stickball. And it's a fine perspective, I think, that adults should have. I have friends that, I have a friend that's a judge. She happens to be Cuban. I have a friend who manages a facility. He happens to be a Puerto Rican man. I've attended Yom HaShul events at Pinewood Jewish Center. I've attended, I just came from a Chinese New Year celebration. And for a public official to put misrepresentations on the public record without ever having talked to me, contacted me, is shameful, honestly. And I would just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sen.
Scott Van Koppin, 14 Bogart Road. Also Mustang, full president at the high school. I had heard before, and I'm going to go off of academics and ask about some athletics that you had mentioned at the high school. One, I think there's a lot of interest at Boys varsity, Breath Boys volleyball level. It came across last year. It got knocked down. I hope you reconsider it. And two, I think the used or trucked or whatever the band is looking for would be a welcome addition to the high school. We, as football parents and sports parents, would like nothing more than the band to attend away games. And I hope that would be the intent of having a truck. So, thank you.
I do believe there was something on the proposed budget about volleyball.
Yes, it is included.
Voice volleyball. Thank you. I'll close, public participation. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items I through O.
Second.
Moving through the agenda, any questions or comments about I, the minutes? J, administrative, any comments or questions? Any comments or questions about K, facilities and finance? L? M? Comments, questions? N, policy? Comments, questions? Or O? Mr. T, a real call, please.
Mr. Grau? Yes, on everything except the public meeting on the second of February, where I left early. I wasn't here for the vote, so I'll abstain on those minutes. Mr. Roig?
Yes.
Dr. Cortino?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, except abstaining. I checked, numbers eight, 142, and eight, 1267.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstaining on item I, the minutes for February 2nd. Yes, to all.
Dr. Modred?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Doby?
Yes.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
Vote has passed.
Any more business?
I just, yeah, I do have some old business, briefly. Last week, last meeting, there was some discussions about the fact that the balance, imbalances between Woodmont and Hilldale, specifically Hilldale being overcrowded, which is completely true, was going to lead to the shifting of some Rachel Gardens students from Woodmont to Hilldale. And specifically, the recommendations were that, I guess, all new students in the incoming first through fifth-grade classes from Rachel Gardens would go to Hilldale. I mean, to Woodmont, rather. Looking at the numbers, I support that. The numbers are not balanced between the two schools, and the Hilldale classes are too big. The other proposal was that all kindergarten classes, all Rachel Gardens students next year for kindergarten would go to Woodmont. The administration was good enough to give us some numbers. And these are not definitive numbers, but the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Rovatar, my understanding is that the tentative numbers, if you go by trends and things like that, would be that if you were to put all of the new kindergarten students from Rachel Gardens into Woodmont, you would have, I think, 36 students at Hilldale and 55 at Woodmont, 32 of which would be from Rachel Gardens. Now, I want to be very, very, very clear about something. This is not about the demographics of people. It's not about socioeconomic status. It's about student mobility. Being a Woodmont parent and harking back to a day when, at one time, all of the Rachel Gardens students went to Woodmont, it led to extremely high mobility rates. There's never been a study that I've ever known that's ever said that student mobility is a good thing for either the students who are mobile or the students who are having students come in and out of the classroom. Under the administration's proposal at this time, we'd have roughly 60% of this year's, next year's kindergarten class at Woodmont being from Rachel Gardens. And I'm just saying this from my own experience. That my daughter started at Woodmont, I think, in 1998. There were 66 students in the grade. Forty-four were from the homes, 22 were from the apartments. Out of the 44 in the homes, 36 were still there at the end of fifth grade. Now, the 22 in the apartments, 19 were gone. So what I'm really concerned about is creating one grade at Woodmont where we go from kindergarten to fifth grade, you're going to have approximately a 70% turnover statistically. Now, I do understand that one of the important issues is that Hilldale needs another classroom. And if we had two sections at Hilldale next year, it would allow us, we would be freed up for basic skills like with Dr. Rovatar, which...
We have a number of needs, but certainly that's on the list.
Right. And that's very important for Hilldale. But what I'm saying is, I think at this time, we don't know what the demographics are going to be. We don't know how many students are coming in. And I think, I don't know that you need to do 100% shift between the two schools to be able to cut Hilldale down to two sections in kindergarten. And Dr. Modred has, you know, very accurately stated that, you know, diversity at Hilldale is a good thing. You don't want to lose that. We don't want to lose it at Woodmont either. I just have a great deal of concern about having one grade at Woodmont being such that approximately 60, 60% of the kids, the great majority of them statistically... being such that approximately sixty, out of sixty percent of the kids, the great majority of them statistically, are not gonna be there by the time they graduate from fifth grade. So, the only thing I'm asking right now is, my suggestion would be, let's keep the concepts in mind, but I really think it's premature to make a decision to say right now definitively, this is what we're going to do for next year, and let's see what we have. And I think we can accomplish what the administration needs to accomplish without, you know, taking a total one direction and just saying definitively, this is what we're gonna do, just all the students in one class. I don't really know that that's going to fit the needs of either school, and that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Just a question. Are these kids going to then be, say, for the kids next year that do, if they do go to Woodmont, would they then go to Woodmont the remainder of their time? Or would they, in the subsequent years after we get the demographic study and redistrict, would they then be sent to other schools, or?
I, I think we need to see what the results of the demographic study are. I would certainly like to think that we could preserve the option for those students once they've begun their career at Woodmont, to be able to stay through fifth grade if that was their choice. But if there's some redistricting that goes on that, you know, would allow students to perhaps move to another school if that was their choice, I think we have to see how the enrollment shakes out. But certainly, it would not be our intent to, you know, force a child after their kindergarten year to change schools. You know, we would wanna, you know, provide, since we reassign them, we would wanna provide the opportunity for them to continue in that.
But you basically leave it up to the, up to the parents whether or not they want to continue or maybe go somewhere else?
Yeah, well, I don't know that we could promise anything beyond you would be allowed to complete, you know, since we reassign you, you would be allowed to complete, you know, your elementary program at Woodmont. And beyond that, I think we need to take a look and see where the numbers are.
And, you know, in the name of stability, I would not wanna see children in the middle of their stay at Woodmont or Hilldale being told you need to go to another school. I mean, whether or not that's something you have to do, I don't know. It's not something I would want to say, I mean, that's, really goes to the whole argument I'm trying to make. It's not good when these kids have to go from one school to another. And, you know, some kids have to do it, but it's never a good thing. And I'm just trying to keep everything as stable as possible. Again, it's, it's not about demographics, it's about stability.
That would be the intent.
Right, Mr. O'Brien? You're gonna? Mike?
So I'd like to comment on a couple things that came up in public input, if that's all right?
Okay.
The first one is, we've had a lot of talk about Lazar School tonight and changes and there. From my point of view, and it may be whatever section of my brain, I think if and when we have a discussion, presentation, whatever it is, at the next or an upcoming curriculum committee, it would be helpful to me if I could actually, my kids, long since, our five kids all went through Lazar. It's a long time, a lot of changes, okay? Actual, some actual schedules that we could see, like as Johnny or Jane or Spot or whoever is discussing through the three-year sideline, what would be the poss, you know, just, I'm not trying to make more work, but I could understand it better by seeing actual schedules.
We can definitely provide that.
Yeah, what a student's schedule would look like as we move forward, okay? So, that's one thing. The second thing is, not tonight, but maybe at a, the next meeting or the following meeting, if we could get back and have an update and discussion about the SR issue, where we're going or where we're?
Well, we're, at this point, we're really, we're waiting for subcommittee meeting to be scheduled between the Township Committee and the Board.
Okay, good, all right. And then, next, on the comments that our mayor made regarding his concerns, okay? And I think there's a lot of moving parts here that all fit together, all right? You were talking first about the demographic study. Now, again, it may be the way my mind works, but I, I see a connection. I think this is of great importance, the demographic, demographic study. But I see a connection in my mind between the demographic study and One Monka, okay? I think those two things are connected. Now, you'd have to think a little bit to be clear on how they are connected, but I think they are. And I think moving forward with this, this is like a major concern for us, where students will be, in what schools, and what students. We have One Monka, we're trying to bring the town together. And apparently, because of not good communication or whatever happened, some offense was given, which is totally the opposite of What Monka is about, okay? So, you know, there, there's something wrong there, something has happened, has gone awry. So I think we need to reestablish whatever connection with the Township Committee and One Monka. And I think when the demographic study is complete, whatever options we, whatever we come up with, as our mayor said, I, I think beyond just presenting a report to the Township Committee, and, you know, here, you figured it out, I think really we have to make a presentation possibly to the Township Committee. I mean, I certainly would be willing to go to one of their meetings and help with it. Not, I'm not an expert, but to be there to, I think we really have to reach out on all these issues, the demographic study and the One Monka, we have to reach out to the Township Committee and get back working together again for the benefit of everyone, for the benefit of the community. I'm very concerned about the comments that we hear. I don't wanna get overcharged with anything. And I don't wanna create new problems that could arise out of decisions that are made correctly or incorrectly as a result of the demographics.
There is no question that for years, we've worked very hard to secure very strong relations, and we will continue to.
I, thank you, I appreciate it.
It's a very important aspect. We're all members in the same community, and it's extremely important for us all to work together, and we have it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other general board comments?
Yeah. First of all, Mike, the demographics, when they're surveyed, I'm sure they'll be in touch with the Township Committee and the people. The other thing, I've been listening here, and, and I'm a little upset. As a board member, we took an oath. We read the Code of Ethics at our organizational meeting. We're not here to run the schools. We're here to decide if we're running. I take exception when board members are saying, I recommend, I suggest. We are here to act upon the recommendations of the superintendent. If the superintendent recommends something and you don't want it, vote no. But we are not here to sit at this podium telling the superintendent, do this, do that, do the other thing. And I'll end it with that, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Do I have a general comment? What I would like to do is to congratulate some of the Lazar teachers, specifically Cheryl Zunon, Karen Sibion, Marissa Castranova-Wose, for their featured spotlight in New Jersey Teachers Maxium. So congratulations to all of you. We should have a meeting on that note.
Yeah.
We do have one more public participation.
I do have one more question, though. And this is kind of a selfish question.
We'll wait then.
The March twenty-second meeting is going to be at the high school. So, is it going to be in our brand-new media center?
I believe so, yay!
I'd like to, I'd like to make one comment. Hey, I don't wanna open up a hornets' nest here, just, if, the comments to me, I just, I don't?
I didn't say it was you, Mike. I didn't mention anybody.
I make a motion to close.
Okay, now, just say that, you know, here on the board, I think we've had a, you know, I think we've had a good relationship by ourselves and the administration for a number of years. And, you know, being here on the board, I think it's a chance to say things in public, get ideas out. I mean, that's why we're here. And, yeah, I, I think one of the valuable things we do is to share our perspective on things and, you know, our thoughts and desires as to what we would like. That doesn't, I don't think that's telling the superintendent to do anything. But I do think we do serve a valuable function by sharing thoughts, brainstorming, and coming up with new ideas, so. That's, that's the way I feel, and, I, Charlie, thank you, it wasn't directed against me, and I didn't think it was. But I just feel that what we do here is valuable. I think discussion is valuable. Discussion, civilized discussions, it's always valuable.
Thank you. I'm gonna open, Mr. O'Brien?
I just, jumping topics, I just wanna get you this in your record.
Is it old business? Are we on old business?
I'm still general board comments.
It's just, okay, I, I just wanted to tell everyone, in case you're not aware, a little fact that the Monka Township High School Hall of Fame induction dinner this year is on April eighth. There is now a Facebook page, Monka Township High School Hall of Fame. So, you can go through our Facebook if anybody's interested. I just want you to be aware of that. And the second, the last thing, I think, is, I appreciate all the positive comments, and I think when we're done tonight, we need a big group hug.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Any member of the public would like to participate, any comments at all? Seeing as there are none?
I spoke too soon.
Jim Sandman, again, I just want to make sure everybody is clear. Can you hear me? I wanna make sure everybody's clear. Since I was on that dais as a Board of Education member, and since I've been on the Township Committee, we've done nothing but tried to work diligently for the two boards committees to work together for the betterment of the whole town, that's okay? We would welcome a presentation on the demographics at the Township Committee. We would welcome a One Monka presentation. We do, we want nothing but improved communications and the betterment of this, the Board of Education responsibility as well as the Township Committee responsibilities. I just wanna make sure that?
The One Monka is reading again next Monday, and I'm sure your ideas will be shared with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Seeing as there is no other public participation, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.